I call the meeting of the North Syracuse Central School District Board of Education to order. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and through the republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And begin with a moment of silence with the following. Pamela Herman Vannuti, retiree of the North Syracuse Central School District. Virginia Lovejoy, retiree of the North Syracuse Central School District. Suzanne Richards, retiree of the North Syracuse Central School District. And Mark Vols, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. Thank you. Yes. Yes, sir.
I knew two of these people very personally, and I called them friends. Suzanne Richards, both taught at Bear Road Elementary when it was Bear Road. Suzanne Richards taught second grade, but she taught in a room that included another teacher, Terry Tool. The two of them had first and second grade. And we're talking back in the seventies. A combined classroom, which back then was really amazing. And I always enjoyed walking by their room. There were two doors down from me because they had these kids working together all day long. You know, second graders helping the first graders, the first graders. She was a marvelous person. It is a sad day to lose somebody that I've known for a while. The second one, Virginia Lovejoy, taught with me at Main Street. She was third grade. I was fifth grade. And when we went to Big Board and we closed Main Street and went to Bear Road, we were partners. Her room was next to mine, and I taught third grade and she taught third grade. And if you ask any of the teachers in the audience, you really get to know the person next to you that you work with or the person down the hall. You know about their kids. You know about what's happening in their life. And she just was a wonderful person who really mentored me because I was young and trying ideas. These are two, I know the other two probably, but these two, I still can see them at Bear Road. So thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to begin with a quite a proclamation. So bear with me. This is going to be the bulk of the meeting. It's a lot of things, so I'm going to do my best to do, be a skilled reader. Ready? You don't have to say you're ready. Okay. Just talking to myself. And this is for a lot of appreciation. Teachers, school nurses, teaching assistants, speech therapists, transportation personnel, and teacher aide appreciation. So throughout history, teachers, school nurses, teaching assistants, speech therapists, transportation personnel, and teacher aides have had an impact on the district's students and community. They work for the well-being, welfare, and future of our children. This awesome responsibility is accepted with commitment, dedication, and even love. Because of the complexity and diversity of their role, they must be flexible, resourceful, positive, impatient. The teachers, school nurses, teaching assistants, speech therapists, transportation personnel, and teacher aides of the North Syracuse Central School District are professionals of the highest caliber who have dedicated themselves to the ideals of their profession. Students, parents, administrators, and community members recognize, applaud, and appreciate their efforts to ensure students receive a quality education. To honor the teachers, school nurses, teaching assistants, speech therapists, transportation personnel, and teacher aides of the North Syracuse Central School District and their accomplishments and efforts on behalf of our community's most valuable resource, our children, I, Paul Farfali, a president of the Board of Education of the North Syracuse Central School District, on behalf of the board, express our deepest gratitude. And hereby declare following: May 2nd, 2023 is Teacher Appreciation Day; May 3rd, 2023, School Nurse Appreciation Day; May 4th, 2023, Transportation Personnel Appreciation Day; May 5th, 2023, Speech Therapist Appreciation Day; May 9th, 2023, Teaching Assistant Appreciation Day; and May 16th, 2023 Teacher Aide Appreciation Day, to be celebrated with appropriate educational activities. So if I can get a motion, motion from Mr. Thornsec, from Mr. Crabtree, any other discussion? All in favor? Oh, thank you. That is caring. We have some proclamations, some certificates.
But let's, let's go in, uh, school nurses first. And so John Corilla, if you can come forward.
Come up, Joy, if you would, please, uh, share with the superintendent board your name and your place, location, and if you'd like, the number of years you've worked with us.
Put this to the side. So I'm going to ask you. Multiple microphones.
There you go.
Hi, I'm June Chamberlain, and I'm at Allen Road, and I've been with the district for fourteen years.
Jane Wotazek, currently at Cisro North Syracuse High School, been with the districts for thirty-two years, and this is my second retirement.
I'm Gail Vannett. I'm at the North Syracuse Early Education Program, and it's my seventeenth year.
Kathy Dio, I'm at the North Syracuse Early Education Program, and this is my fourth year.
Hi, Robyn Makepeace. I'm at CNS High School, and this is my sixth year with the district.
Thank you very much. Say thank you. Thank you. Thank you for being. You look very familiar.
I know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Each language.
Motorcycle?
Nope. Wish I could say that.
First, on behalf of the district, thank you for being here, and we're going to turn the microphone. If you can say your name, how many years, and the location.
Carol Guido, Smith Road Elementary School, thirty-six years.
Melissa Ryder, Roxborough Road Elementary, twenty-nine years.
Kelly Glasshauser, Gillette Road Middle School, seven years.
And at this time, all teachers, if you can step forward.
We don't count. We're here for a different. You don't get a donut tomorrow if you don't.
This is perfect. Again, on behalf of the, the district and the Board of Education, we want to thank you for being here, and I'm going to pass the microphone. If you can tell us your name, location, and how many years you've been with the district. And I think we'll start down here.
Okay, surprise. My name is Danielle Barrett. I think I'm in the district maybe on year nineteen, maybe eighteen. I'm losing track. And I'm at the junior high, Roxell and Rox Middle as a technology coach.
I'm Jessica Keen. This is my ninth year with the district. I'm currently at CNS, and I teach French.
I'm Shannon Knapp. I'm currently at the high school, Gillette Road Middle School, and the North Syracuse Early Ed Program as a tech coach. I have twenty-six years altogether with the district. I started as a special educator at Main Street School.
My name is Chris Mank. I'm the third tech coach. Started at Rox Middle as a math teacher, and now I serve as Allen Bear, Cisro, Lake Shore, and Smith Road. And this is my thirtieth year.
I'm Lindsay Marzullo. I'm at Smith Road, and this is my fifteenth year.
Danielle Preville. I'm also at Smith Road. This is my tenth year.
Mary Murdock. I teach Spanish at the high school. That's my twenty-fifth year.
Kristen Dietrich. I teach English at the high school, and I have no idea how many years. I'm just glad I still have a job.
No, no, no. Carol Gaynor. I teach social studies at the high school. I am completing my forty-first year.
Linda Condon. I teach at Smith Road. This is my twenty-fourth.
Ryan Condon, sixth grade special ed at Roxborough Middle, and this is my fifth year.
Kathy Kirschbaum, sixth grade, Rox Middle. I have no idea because I stayed home with kids and I came back, so fourteen-ish.
Hi, I'm Maureen Alvaro. I'm the music teacher at Lake Shore Road, and I've been here for about eight years.
Danielle Rousa. I think it's twenty-six or twenty-seven years. I'm not sure. Music at CNS High School.
I will take that microphone too. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Twenty-five years.
Look at you, young man.
Oh, I was going to say, you had more time.
Do we have anyone from transportation personnel? See that? Teaching assistant, Mindy Bristol. Are there any other teaching assistants here? Are you representing the group? Well, then, I'm going to have you tell them who you are and how long you've been in the district.
Hi, I'm Mindy Bristol. I'm president of the Teaching Assistance Union, and I have been with the district for thirty-eight years, and I'm at Cisro Elementary.
I'm Renee Merritt. I am the Technology Assistant at Cisro L and the Vice President of the Teaching Assistant Unit, and I've been with the district twenty-four years.
We have a number of microphones, so right here. We're doing the.
And do we have anyone here from the teacher aides unit? Okay. Right, I think that completes our recognition and thank everyone. I said transportation. And so thank everyone for being here, and let's give everyone a round of applause.
Hey, thank you. Here we have a present, presentations from the North Syracuse Education Foundation and to announce the grant winners, so who's doing that for us? I'm looking. You got, okay, you, I'm going to just, there's a microphone up here that I turned off, so you're going to have to push the little button on it.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sharon Furman. I am the pres, Vice President of the Foundation. On behalf of our president, Jackie Forte, she would like to apologize for not being here this evening. Unfortunately, she had an unexpected event come up that she had to attend. I'm sure most of you are familiar with the foundation, but for those of you who are not familiar with us, we are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit for North Syracuse School District. We're one hundred percent volunteer-run. We fundraise throughout the year to raise money to give back to our district in the form of grants. We present these grants once a year. All of our schools, pre-K through the high school, are eligible to apply for the grants. The grants are to enhance the education within the classroom. To date, we have awarded over $220,000 in grants. And tonight, we'll be presenting grants in the total of $14,408.36. Our main fundraiser this past year was our twenty-four, twenty. This was to celebrate the foundation's twentieth year in hopes of raising $20,000. We're very pleased to announce that we raised $20,500 plus. As mentioned, we are one hundred percent volunteer-run. We're always looking for new volunteers along with new student reps. Our reps are required to be in eighth through twelfth grade. If you're interested or know of anyone that would be interested in joining our family, please visit our Facebook page, or you can go to our website. There's information on there. So on behalf, on behalf of North Syracuse Education Foundation officers, board members, and volunteers, I would like to extend a thank you to the school board for all that you do and for the time, giving us the time at tonight's meeting to present our grants for the 2023-2024 school year. Here helping me represent our foundation are Carolyn Gross, our secretary, Nat Ordway, our treasurer, Mary Etta, a board member. And then in the audience, we have a couple of our volunteers, Molly Gwen and Zoe Gwen, a student rep.
Okay, our first grant's going to Danielle Barrett, Shannon Knapp, and Chris Manki. They are outstanding tech reps. Let me tell you, technology people. They've helped me a lot. Their, their grant was called Unplug with Digital Wellness with Picture Books. And what it was, it's a pre-K through four. All, about three thousand one hundred and fifty-four students are, are involved with this grant. And it's going to impact all of the elementary students in every elementary school, which was very interesting. So what they've done is they've, they've chosen picture books that will stimulate discussions and build habits that work toward developing important 21st century digital skills. The library media specialists are also involved with this to help them get that information out and to make sure the books are read. I was very impressed with this. They were our number one. Afterwards. When everyone's done, okay. Our next grant is called Social Emotional Learning at the Secondary Level. And Sarah Bambino, I don't think she's here tonight, but her, it's grades, CNS High School, English grades ten, eleven, and twelve. And the purpose was to provide unique, engaging, social-emotional learning opportunities to students at the secondary level. And what we're going to purchase for them, or they're purchasing, are they're going to do print resources that contain specific ideas for teenagers dealing with anxiety, practice social skills, and team building. And there'll be like games and building materials for students to practice interactions with one another. Social emotion was big this year. And she's not here. Our next grant is called Revamp the Classroom Library, and we have Kathy Kirchbaum and Ryan Condon. I know they're here. And they're at Roxborough Middle, sixth grade ELA. And what they're doing, the purpose of this grant is to provide books that meet academic level, strengths, and interests, and culture diversity at the Roxborough School for their students. It's, they're going to make this part of a forty-book challenge, which will ask each student to read fifty, forty books, which is like a lot of books, but good luck. Okay, the next one is Critical Thinking Through Murder Mysteries, and this is Kristen Dietrich. She teaches, uh, twelfth grade English. It'll impact eight hundred students, which is like a lot of students. The purpose of this grant will provide students with an alternate way to achieve proficiency on ELA state standards. It will, it will provide students with a way to learn in a manner that helps each individual learn in their own way. And what we're going to purchase for them are five different boxed adventure sets that students examine to solve a crime, along with the storage boxes to keep everything, and black light flashlights and batteries. And one of the things you're interested, like the Blair Witch Project kind of thing, this is what that is. So this is Christine, Kristen Dietrich. I'm going to say this one, but Melissa Palmasano was not here. She had outfitting classroom libraries. And Melissa applied for this grant last year, and due to money restraints, we couldn't get it for her. But then she did more research, looked into it, and now she's got all six English teachers from the high school working with her to get this grant. And we're providing bookshelves for six classrooms to make it easier to encourage and provide classroom libraries that are integral to successful teaching and learning. Therefore, they can get it right in their classroom. So that's what, that's great. Okay, Jennifer Fisher is not here also, and hers is interesting too. A mobile maker space to cultivate growth mindsets and social-emotional learning. And this is also CNS High School grades eleven, twelve, ELA. And what we're purching for her is a maker space is a student-centered collaborative learning space that encourages problem-solving and hands-on exploration. A cart will be purchased with creative materials to foster learning through inquiry and help build an overall classroom community. There will be creative art supplies plus a 3D printer, and that will help make art projects to enhance the learning of English class. We have Jessica Keen and Mary Murdock. I know they're here. I was going to read this in French, but I don't think so. I can do a couteau, but it's interpretive listening in action, but I don't do the Spanish, so. All right, this is great. Also CNS High School grades ten through twelve world languages, which is very important world languages. Small world we have here. Students are expected to understand and interpret and analyze what is read and heard on a variety of topics using a range of diverse texts, including authentic resources and listening to authentic resources in Spanish and French. So what we're going to purchase for them are class, two classroom sets of headphones that are noise-defining. They don't hear the noise, so hopefully that'll help with the English or the, and this is from the Spanish to French to English, though, as they do authentic resources. Okay, another person, she's not here either, but this was an interesting kind of topic too. This is Maureen Alvaro. She's from Lake Shore Elementary, and she teaches, oh, she's here? Oh, yay! I don't know you, but this was so interesting thing. All right, she's from Lake Shore. She teaches music from K through four. And what we're purchasing for her are songbooks. Student, apparently the kids in her class, you do these favorites songs, tales, folk tales. And so we're going to purchase the books, and they have interesting illustrations so that they can access these books outside of the music classrooms, like Over in the Meadow and There's a Hole in My Bucket, that kind of thing, so. That's, that's Maureen Alvaro. Okay, Lindsay Marzullo and Danielle Preville. This is Smith Road Elementary, grade two classes. And theirs called Flexible Board Gaming Playground. So the purpose of this grant is to encourage teamwork, good sportsmanship, critical thinking. Uh, we're going to purchase games that will be deductive and reasoning, vocabulary, found directions, word building, problem solving, the whole gamut, the whole jabang. And there's games like Boggle and Guess Who and Life, and that's great. Karen Siemens, I don't think is here. Karen Siemens, we're getting, her, her grant was called Untethered. We're purchasing two wireless microphone systems to help the marching band, which is award-winning. And what it will do, it'll feature soloists on the field, and they're highlighted through their whole program rather than having to come to the, to the side or wherever they do, they do it out there. So that's a staging will help design, so that's what, that's Karen Siemens, Untethered. And then Danielle Rousa. Hers is called Purple Haze, and she's from CNS High School grades eight through twelve. And we're going to purchase an Ultra Tech Radiance Haze machine, which will be used for the, with the performance of arts in both the high school and the junior high. The machine helps with lighting effects during a performance, that's what I read. And she requested two, but we can only afford one, so she's getting one, but maybe next year you'll try again. Try again. Thank you.
Thank you. This means a lot.
Oh, I hope. Now we're going to go see the perform. And our last person is, um, well, this is P2 Paint the Mile, that's what it's called, and Warner Varno is the grant winner. And it's at Gillette Road, and it works with grades five through seven. Um, the district has come in, uh, we count this as part of our, they applied to us, and we brought it to the district, and the district is doing it. So they're going to provide supplies, so this Paint the Mile Club can paint the track at Gillette. And then they'll put up, um, signs so that encourage runners. And I think the track needs fixing too, apparently. So they'll do that first, then they can paint. And that's, that's our last one. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Okay, next, we're going to have a Community Schools Initiative Program update. We'll wait till this clears out, but Ms. Dr. Leahy and, is Miss Goldberg is not here? You gotta reach that bar. She's a great presenter.
Okay, so good evening. My name's Christopher Leahy. I'm the Associate Superintendent. My partner Lisa Goldberg is not here tonight, but I'm going to go ahead and present some information on the Community Schools Program that I think is, is a really exciting program with some opportunities for partnerships that will benefit the district for many years to come. Um, the first thing I want everybody to understand is we have, as Mr. Keegan's pointed out over the last several months, some challenges ahead with Cursa Funding, sunsetting in September of 2033, and ARP sunsetting in September of 24. And we have a lot of positions and programs that are tied to those funds. So what we're looking for and exploring is how do we maintain what we have? And how do we also take stock, take inventory, provide focus, and then continue some of the program we have in place for our students? We all recognize the value of it, and we don't want to see it go, to be quite frank. So I think we have what may be part of a larger solution that I'd like to share with you tonight. The first part, I think it's understand for everyone to understand what are community schools? And you really say you can't provide a singular definition of community schools, but what we can provide are some of the guiding principles of this work. The first is it's investing in a whole-child approach to learning. It's not just their academic or cognitive needs. It's social, emotional, psychological, sometimes it's material needs, sometimes it's even medical needs. It's using data, community wisdom to set goals and guide partnerships. It's very much as you'll see tonight, steeped in the data. Do we understand where chronic absenteeism is the largest challenge? Why does it exist? Can we do a root cause analysis to really dig deeper? And I'll share a few things tonight that'll probably open your eyes a little bit. Committing to interdependence and accountability, we have to do this with our community partners. We're learning to get better, and we're learning to forge really great relationships with other organizations in our community. And the other part of it is accountability. We have to hold ourselves accountable. We have to hold our partners accountable, and we have to really understand the work we're going to do moving forward. The fourth one is pursuing equitable outcomes. They're saying we want our child, our children, our students to have equitable access to all the wonderful things the district has to offer. I'll give you a simple example. Providing UP, Universal Pre-K in five sites and locations provides students with equitable access to kindergarten. We get kids an early start, we get kids access to UPK, and then when they start kindergarten, kids are ready for school. And then fostering a shared learning organization founded on collaboration, respect, and partnership. We're all here to support our students, to give them the best high quality education that we can. Now, what's really exciting is Bosse's actually has a Community Schools Coser, and we've worked with Jackie Beck, Dorian Bergman, over the last few months, met quite a few times, say, how would this fit for us? North Syracuse is unique. It's a larger district with lots of unique challenges, as all districts, public schools have unique challenges. And there's really four tenants to it. The first one is Integrated Student Supports. We want to get to the gold standard, which is we don't send kids out of our schools to get the support they need. The support is embedded in the school day, and we're finding that we're getting really, really good at that, but it's integrated. It's not when something happens, we have to send you away. We want you here. We want you in school. And we want our schools to be able to participate in supporting our students in a variety of different ways. The second one is Active Family and Community Engagement. We have to communicate. We have to work with our community. We have to have them in our schools. We want our community to be part of this initiative so they can lead us and guide us and help us understand what their needs are. Part of the data collection we'll be doing internally, but as we move forward over the next couple of months, we're going to be surveying the community on their needs and how we can best support those needs. The third one is Expanded and Rich Learning Opportunities. We have quietly, over the last few years, expanded learning opportunities. This summer alone, we have twelve summer programs we're running. We have thousands of kids that are going to be actively learning throughout the summer. We have a Twenty First Century Community Schools Program where students are after school, students are before school. We're doing more than we ever had, and we want to really look at this and say, okay, let's take stock of what we're doing. Where are we finding that there's the actual data that supports, benefiting students? And how do we expand those opportunities where they're working well? And how do we maybe replace some opportunities that aren't working so well? And the last part is Collaborative Leadership. You know, we find if we look through our meeting calendar, we're meeting with more groups and organizations outside of the district than we ever have before. And that's kind of a healthy thing in a sense that we're learning from each other, we're learning from our partners. When we have needs that we can't meet internally, we have a list of groups that can support us and work with us. And I'll share that list towards the end of the presentation. So if we look here, this kind of gives an overview, and I'm not going to get too much into the details on it. But what's important to me, and I think a great way to think about this, if we look at the left hand column, these are the characteristics. It's about promoting equity, where families and students have supports necessary to ensure equitable access to high quality supportive inclusive learning environments. We want all kids to fully participate in all that North Syracuse has to offer. But to do that, we've got to do some work around that to make sure students do have access. The second one is Integrated, Integrated Support to the School, Address Out of School Issues, Helps Increase Access to and Engagement with Public Education. We know there are external factors that have an impact on what happens when we're with schools during the day. And we have all kinds of things that are naturally evolving in our districts, food pantries, home visits, opportunities for families to work directly with professionals here on campus. There's a lot of things that we're doing, and there'll be even more. And the, the third one is Multi-Tier, Tier Levels of Support Across All Domains, Ensure Equitable Allocation of Resource and a Whole Person Approach to Learning. Not every student needs intensive support, but some students do. Some students need some targeted support, some needs, some need just some evidence based core instruction. But what we're learning is to identify who needs what and ensure that we're providing what students need. Now, if you look in the right hand column, what's here are the approaches. It's how do we do this work? And in the top right, it's Family, Community Engagement. We've got to work with our community, work with our students and our families as we move forward. Collaborative Leadership. There is not a person that leads this. There is a team of folks that'll lead this initiative throughout the district. And the third part is Data Driven. We've been looking at a lot of data over the last few weeks, and the data is really compelling and interesting. And we're asking some really hard questions. The next step will be to do root cause analysis. And if we say, hey, why is chronic absenteeism so high in certain schools and not so high in others? What's the root cause of that? How did that happen? Why do we think that happened? And what can we do about it? The next part is interesting, and I'm going to call your attention to the inverted triangle at the bottom. And what we have here is really the idea that there's a lot more that we can offer, and we are offering, than the traditional school system, early childhood programs. Again, if you think about UPK, we have more students participating in UPK than we ever have in this district. We have five locations. We've been very intentional about geographically spacing those locations throughout the districts. They're not north of forty-one, but we have two UPK classes at Roxell. We now have a program at NSCEP. We've got five sites all together, and it's a wonderful thing because it provides more access, and it was done with intention. Before and after school programs, athletic clubs, tutoring programs. It's wonderful. One of the, the jobs that I get is to approve field trips. And there was a time during COVID where there were no field trips, and to see that kids are doing some things out in the community, whether it's going to the most or the wild, and to be able to kind of review that and improve it. It's a wonderful thing to get kids out, because those are high value activities for our students. When we look at our summer programming, we're building enrichment activities in there, our clubs and our summer programs. Like I said, we have twelve summer programs we're managing this summer. So what we're finding is it's a bigger scope than we've ever had in terms of supporting, engaging our students as well as our community. And some of the things that run across the band in the center are opportunities and possibilities. They're not commitments, but it's looking at medical and dental care, clothing. We provide support for students at CNS in the green room. We have food security, crisis management, adult education, social services. These are things to, to think about, how we support all those things on the outside, mental health, social emotional learning, academic needs and behavior. I would argue, when I went to school, the academic was paramount. And things have changed quite a bit since that time, right? So the question is, how do we do this? What's the process? And Bosse's has a wonderful process, and they've used it with other districts. The first part is simply exploring it, looking at the framework, saying, is this a good fit for North Syracuse? Does this make sense for us? How, how do we approach the work? And, and part of that is building an advisory team. Again, there's not a, a person that leads us. It's a team of folks. And that team could evolve through time, depending on which direction the work takes. That's the first part, and we've already started building our advisory team. I think we have at this point eleven people on it, and it'll, it'll evolve. And then it's the planning part, and this is where we are now, is conducting an audit. What do we have in place? Is it effective? Are these things that we have in place supporting our students? Do we have data to show it's effective? And then identify and prioritize needs. Our superintendent has spoken to other superintendents about this, and we've been given the caveat of, don't try to do too much. Focus on one or two things at a time and do them very, very well to get this work started. And then the idea is building an action plan for community schools infrastructure. You can't just do community schools. You have to deal with the logistics of resources, timing, scheduling. One of our challenges because of the number of programs we now have in our schools is, is simply space. Where are we putting people? You know, where is that office space going to be? Where are students going to be meeting? Although we have declining enrollment, there's never been more of a premium on space than ever before because we have so many different groups working within our schools, which is a really healthy sign, but it also creates a new set of challenges. Implementation, we carry out the action plan. We assess fidelity of implementation as we move forward. And we continue to assess the success and decision making criteria. Are these the right decisions? Is it hitting the mark? Are we seeing results? And then by five years, continue to evaluate practice and programs, continue to focus on continuous improvement. And the idea is by five years, it should take root, and it should be common to our district and well understood by our district and included in our district plans and budgeting processes and things like that. Now, the planning, as I mentioned a few minutes ago, we have an advisory team could consist of leaders, teachers, union representatives. As we move forward, we'll identify who the appropriate school community members are or community agencies. We're working, we're starting the, the beginning of looking at our needs. What are our needs? What are our most glaring needs? And how do we consider those needs as we move forward? And how does it fit within this framework? Not everything is going to fall under this umbrella. But a lot of things we do, I suspect, will and, and are going to. Assessment, how do we know what this community needs? Bosse's has surveys that they've created. We'll work through those surveys. We'll probably modify them slightly and get our stakeholders in. What I really like about this Coser is that they don't just send out surveys. They schedule interviews with folks, and they really ask great questions and try to understand, you know, what, what are the perspectives from across the district, both within our schools as well as the community and other stakeholders? And then it's about the prioritization, the data synthesis, goal setting, and action plan. And then the initial implementation, we have our facilitators. We partner with school, families, community providers. We assess our fidelity. We assess our outcomes, and we make decisions based on that. And again, it's very much rooted in ongoing data collection and synthesis analysis. We want to understand that where we're putting our resources, our time and our energy is the best place we could be. And some potential partnerships that Bosse's has identified in working with schools. You have your community, community agencies, and a lot of these aren't going to sound that unfamiliar to folks. CCSI, we have a relationship there, taking consortium, contact community service. We have a relationship there, Helio Health, Peaceful Schools. Higher Education, we're working with our community college with OCC, Syracuse University, SUNY Colleges, OCM Bosse's Adult Education, Social Services, Child Advocacy Centers, United Way, Housing Assistance Agencies, State and Local Agencies, County Health Department, New York State Office of Mental Health, Law Enforcement, Hospitals, Healthcare. These are just a preliminary potential list, but the idea is leveraging these other agencies to work and support our school mission and our students. And I don't know, there's ever been a, a time where these agencies are more excited and interested in working with us, and they understand the value of supporting the schools and our mission. Does anybody have any questions? I know there was a lot of information in a short period of time, but we did want to kind of give you an overview, and I'm sure we'll be back probably in a few months, letting you know our progress and where we are.
I am, well, I was going to go last, but I'll go. Help me understand then, so we have the communities, the grant with the Twenty First Century Schools on the two campuses in Roxborough that's doing community schools right now. Yep. How, how is this fitting together, I guess?
That's, that's a great question.
Is it? Because I thought, I wasn't sure if I was.
And that's, that's a great question. So that, so if we remember, remember the Twenty First Century Schools Grant. That is a grant that we applied for with the intention of supporting the Rocks community. And because of some of the unique challenges we work with on that campus, it's only for that program, for those two schools. And it's really about chronic absenteeism, academic outcomes, community engagement, working, creating partnerships and supporting students while providing before and after school care for families and giving kids more opportunities to be in school for longer periods of time, not just during the school year, but in, in the, in the summer holidays and all that. So that program is earmarked there, but what we also know is the needs, what we're seeing, extend well beyond that campus. You know, the Rocks middle students then go to the junior high, then go to the high school or the Roxell students. So the idea is to say, hey, if we survey the community and we do these interviews and we look at our own data, what are the things that really are priorities for us? So for example, if we look at one of the first things I had Donna Marie working with me on, Donna Marie Norton on data poll, and if we look at sports participation rates, and we break it down by zip, if you look at the difference between one, three, two, one, one in the Madel community versus one, three, zero, three, nine, you will see a glaring difference in the number and percentage of students who actively participate in sports. So if we know that, then what? Then what is it the pro, what is the program? And there's a lot of research showing that number one thing that gets kids excited about doing extracurricular works of school activities and sports is building the relationships, is having trusted adults and coaches and people to reach out to them at probably fifth, sixth, seventh grade level and build a relationship, invite them into the program. So what does that mean for us? Well, I think we need to explore that and say, if we want to see full participation in these extracurriculars, then we're going to have to have a, a separate approach to what we have now. We're going to have to think differently about the way we approach students, build those relationships and get kids involved.
Okay, so now I, so that piece you said where we, somebody recommended you don't try and do too much. So you were, that's what you're talking about when you're saying you're assessing what are the needs and what are the pieces we can do? And that was a good example. And so I do get it now, I think. Okay, I just wondered how they.
Yeah, and I think that's the question is, and that's part of the take the inventory piece is to say, we have all these programs, probably the Twenty First Century is most well defined because it's a federal grant that requires a lot of definition. But some of the things we've added during COVID, how do they fit in the bigger picture? And how do we kind of take an inventory and say, okay, this is meeting this need and this is meeting that need. This needs not being met, and maybe this need could be met in a better, more effective way. So it's really about that process, and it has to be steeped in the data to say, what do we know? You know, what do we know? And I think there's a lot of things we're doing really, really well, and I think there's things that we're doing well. And I think there's things that we have to reconsider how we're doing them.
Okay, thank.
What are we using to collect the data points on all of our students? So if we identify needs that particular students have, is, is Bosse's providing a special tool for us for that? Or is it going in the systems that we already have? Because that.
Yeah, we, a lot of the data we have in terms of our own students will be internal. So for example, we could use ByMass, which collects data, social emotional learning. But if it's academics we're focused on, you know, we could look at immunization when students register. You know, how many students are immunized? There are students who miss a significant number of days of school because they're not immunized. And is there a way we can make that more accessible to families? During COVID, it was very challenging just to get a doctor's appointment. We worked with a lot of families to find ways for their child to be, you know, to get their immunization so they could, they could report to school because they can't without it. So there's, there's a lot of different things, but I think what we have to do is decide what are our priorities? Is it chronic absenteeism? If it's chronic absenteeism, and then what's the data points we look at? And then how do we really dig into that and say, well, why aren't students coming to school? Or at what grade level can we identify patterns starting to emerge? Is it first grade? Is it second grade? There's a lot of research to show if a child has chronic absenteeism challenges in fifth, sixth, and seventh grades, it's very hard to overcome them later. And there's a higher, you know, a higher degree or likelihood of, of a student dropping out if they develop those patterns early on.
So there's no central tool. We're kind of pulling data from various.
I think we're going to have to create our own tool. Once we decide where we want to narrow down, and we really, really want to focus. We've got more tools than we've ever had in terms of aims web data and everything else. And then the question, what is our, what is, you know, one of the questions that was brought up that I thought was interesting was, you know, what percentage of students are reading at grade level at different grades throughout the elementary schools? And is there a, a place where it changes? Is there a dip? Is it, is it second grade or third grade where we start to see separation where kids are reading at level and kids start, you know, more and more kids are not reading at grade level anymore? So it's those kinds of questions. And obviously, we literally say it's such an important initiative for our district. I think we'll be looking very closely at that, particularly as students make their way through school.
Well, it seems like it's going well at Roxborough, so.
Other questions, comments? Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, you're welcome. Thank you. Thank you for the time.
You seem really loud today. Okay, we're at the comments from the audience portion. And, and as you know, we welcome comments from the public. We set aside time in every meeting just to, to review again, to be consistent. We allow three minutes per speaker, and our clerk will run a timer. Please, if you have something in writing to leave with the clerks, you'll make sure that everybody in the board receives that. So Mr. Carrilla, I see you're already up here, so. Thank you. It's all yours.
Good evening. I come to you tonight, and I understand the gravity of this. It's been quite some time. Superintendent, I have really decent time of the last few, being able to resolve a number of issues. But occurrences this morning have hit me question product, protocol, integrity. And I cannot allow for this to continue, and this is my forum. And, and Dan, I'll put it right out to you. I wish there were a different way to manage this, but there is not. Good evening. I come to the board this evening angered and troubled regarding recent actions. At issue are the following concerns. One, the collective bargaining agreement signed by both parties states, the selection of textbooks, instructional materials, and the revision of same shall be determined among the respective building administration, the respective directors, supervisors, and the teachers concerned. The respective directors, supervisors and the teachers concerned. When the associate superintendent for teaching and learning or his, her designee makes his, her proposal to the board, the proposal shall include teachers recommendations. Last Friday, the director provided their recommendation to the superintendent absent teacher recommendation. Number two, board policy for five-one-one textbook selection and adoption states there should be no fewer than two for the subject, grade or course. This did not occur at a grade level. A teacher who had to drop out due to two medical events spoke to the issue. She and her concerns were dismissed. Three, programs have supplanted curriculum. Those of you that have a rich history with this district, you understand where I'm going. The rich and comprehensive work in our past. Done in our past, unpacking standards, establishing a North Syracuse curriculum and seeking to adopt materials that best suit our curriculum is no longer. Programs are sought, paired to standards and then rolled out to faculty. I am going to make this clear. I am not against a guaranteed and viable curriculum. I am against the silencing of the professionals, the teachers and the support staff who are accountable to this work. We are not obstructionists as stated by a director. We are advocates for our members, advocates for their work conditions and advocates for their professional voice. This is not the first time we've experienced the intentional silencing of opposing or divergent voices. Is a pattern we find appalling and unacceptable. I thank you for listening and addressing these concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, we're at Board of Education Committee Reports. Mr. Thorne, policy?
Thank you, Paul. Nothing on tonight's agenda regarding the board approving any policies. Our next meeting occurs at the end of the month on the thirtieth of May. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Crabtree, let's just. Okay, thank you. Superintendent Bowles.
Okay. This past Friday, I had the pleasure to go to NBT Stadium where our boys varsity baseball team played. It was a little, again chillier than most, most nights that we've had, but they played really well and they, they beat Rome four to three. Our girls lax team played on Saturday and they won eight to seven against Brighton. And Junior High had the talent show last Friday. I was not able to attend that, but again, I hear things went well. But one of the things that I do want to mention is that we had the opportunity to have about twenty-five girls last Tuesday to go to the Y. For girls going tech. It went from our junior high. I've spoken with the, the liaison from Mike Ron. He was very excited. And more to come as far as good news and our next big event will be the chip camp at the end of the year.
Okay, thank you. Board of Education comments.
Just to comment on the talent show, it was a great evening. We have a lot of talented kids in this district, as we all know. The CNS talent show is coming up in a couple of weeks over at the junior high. Just a reminder tomorrow is our voter registration from four to eight here at the district office in Sisera Elementary School for anybody that would like to register to vote. And this is our last board meeting before May sixteenth. So just as another reminder to get out and tell everybody you know to get out and vote to express your, your right. We'd not. Yeah. So.
Wanted to make sure we pushed it off.
So, so everybody, please get out the sixteenth to vote on our school budget. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Start the timer. So I want to piggyback on our vice president, yeah, about voting on May sixteenth. I just received this on Saturday, the district dispatch. I just feel that Lori did a phenomenal job on this. And, and for our team here, the, the administrators, thank you for the way that you distributed about the taxes and all of that. It's, it's just, it's really well done. I did a road trip today and I see a lot of our signs in our elementary schools. And in the front. We're working on Bear Road, Kyle W. Salley Bear Road, because I think about thousand cars go down there. So thank you to all of you. But I gave each of you five of these green sheets. Please distribute them to at least five voters. I appreciate that. This is a very important budget. We have a lot of great things in it. We don't want to lose anything. Dallas for Scholars is coming up on June sixth at six-thirtieth, the high school. There will be over a hundred scholarships and I know, Mr. President, you'll be speaking that night along with our superintendent. Please, any of you board members, please come to that event. It's really special. We have a lot of memorials. Which would be whatever. Now, my negative thing, of course, I always have something negative. I am very displeased that we do not have a New York State budget after over a month. And we're getting very little, as you know, from the New York School Boards Association. It's very vague what we're getting. And I am just not happy with that. I am hearing that universal meals is not there. And I'm very, very upset about that. I know our legislators have worked really, really hard to, to do that, but I think they've fallen short with the governor. And I, I don't know where the cutoff is going to be, but there are going to be schools in our district where students aren't going to be getting the meals that they should be getting without pay, paying of it. I was up to the high school today at the, at the star shop because I want to get one of those shirts for Friday and I walked through the cafeteria. It's wonderful place. Kids are talking, whatever. And I talked to some of the food service people and I know it's down this year. And I know when we get the report from Wendy Swift and from Don Keegan, that it's not going to be good in, in August. Lunches and breakfasts are down because kids can't afford it. And, and when you make a forty percent or whatever it is, we have a high school that probably won't hit it because we have all kids in there. And we'll have a junior high that won't be able to get the food. You know, yes, our elementary summer will get it, but I am just ashamed of this state. We talk about community schools and all we're doing that the state could not step up and help our kids. So I am not letting it go personally because all kids should have a right to eat. Thank you.
So can I, just a question, because I read, and this is what you're talking about, but I wasn't sure where the threshold was. I read that in there, there's likely some kind of for, for improperly defined, what, would they, how they define a school in poverty, I guess.
What we look at is our Title I schools have a poverty level. And it looks like the state is saying that those schools that are at forty percent of poverty would qualify for the free meals for the building.
Are they, are they using free and reduced lunch numbers for that poverty scale?
I can, I can double check with Mr. Keegan on that, but I'm assuming it's from our, our titles, our Title I report that goes in, that Don Marie does for us.
Okay, just. So is this, so is this forty percent lower than the threshold used to be? Is that what they're saying? No, it's the same old threshold?
I think it's gone up.
So actually it's harder to get free and reduced lunches than it is.
And we've looked at this before. Like you said, Bob, the, the presentations that we got during the COVID years when we were giving lunches to everybody that
Right.
It skyrocketed. And when you see the drop off, it just goes to show how many of our students aren't eating. So I, I, it is a shame that they haven't been able to push this through. And with the community schools initiatives that we're doing, this seems integral into that process. So I.
Yeah, the material needs and clothing and food are a big part of the whole project.
Okay, thank you. Okay, action items. Consideration the approval of the minutes of the meeting of April twenty-fourth. A motion, please. Motion from Mr. Thorne, second from Mr. Moody Wuzak. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor. Oh, that is carried. Thank you very much. Like to combine items B, C and D together. If I get a motion to do that, motion, Mr. Thorne, second from Ms. Segrew. These are the classification of disabled students in school, in preschool and home instruction from the various committees. That is before us. Any questions? Comments, seeing none, all in favor. Oh, thank you. That is carried. Discussion action item A, appointment of voting system specialists. Motion, please. Motion, Ms. Segrew, second from the guy get a second, second from Mr. Moody Wuzak. It's before us now. Yes, sir. That's all right.
Right. Okay, I just, I didn't know where the list came from. I didn't know how they were appointed. I didn't know. I just know that we vote on it. So, thank you.
Is it normal to have?
Right.
Anybody?
Well, I ju- I just know if I'm asked a question, there's probably a lot of people in the audience who have no idea either. So I just thought that's the question. Thank you.
Is it normal to have the same custodian for both locations? It's, it's okay. It's okay.
Other questions? Being none, all in favor. Oh, it's great. That is carried. Instructional personnel report A, a motion placed at before us. Motion, Mr. Thorne, second from Ms. Segrew. Okay, we have that before us. There was a lot in there. Any discussion?
It's sitting there. And it's also in B and C also, but congratulations to all the staff for gaining tenure. It's a I remember when I got it is a really special day and congratulations to all the staff that worked hard. They have to go four years. I only had to go three and, and all the work that they have done and all the coaches that work with them, consultants and so forth. It's, it's a great day.
Yes, it is. Okay. Any other questions? As before us, all in favor. Oh, that is carried. Thank you. And support staff personnel be a motion placed at before us, please. Motion from Mr. Miz Merzio, second from Mr. Moody Wuzak. Okay, any discussion, comments there? Seeing none, all in favor. Host and thank you. That is carried. Administrative personnel report C, a motion, please place that before us. Motion, Ms. Merzio, second from Mr. Moody Wuzak. That is before us. Any comments there? Yes, thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, all in favor. Host, that is carried. Okay, at this time. We do not have, I do not have a motion for executive session, but any board member, if they'd like to make one, may make one. For any of the items. Okay, seeing no motion there, then I'll look for a motion for meeting adjournment. Motion, Mr. Merzio, second from Mr. Moody Wuzak. Any discussion? No, all in favor. Oh, we are adjourned seven oh four.